This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. All of our members are in person and we are recording the meeting. First item on the agenda, is there anyone that would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? I don't see any hands in the room. Anybody online, Jeff, to speak to something not on the agenda?
Not that I can see.
All right, moving right along to our continued public hearing for Tasty Top Development LLC. We had a lot of new submissions in advance of this meeting. Is someone from the applicant that can sort of run us through what we have in front of us and get us started, please?
Good evening again. Luke Scholter for Engineering. So yeah, I'll just give a quick update on where we're at since the last meeting. A quick update on the conservation, we were, uh, Conservation Commission. We received the final review from the Stormwater Peer Reviewer. There was just one outstanding item and it is addressable, so we don't anticipate any more changes to the plans as a result of that process. Since our last planning board meeting, we were asked to submit a full package of application materials, including the engineering plan set with the updated landscaping and lighting plans and all the usual plans, as well as all the building renderings and elevations that have been submitted to date. We were also asked to submit some supplemental narratives to provide additional information on certain aspects of the project. Two additional narrative letters have been submitted. The plans that were submitted also included an intersection plan and a roundabout plan that are the result of the engineer, traffic engineer meetings. There were two meetings that occurred since the last planning board meeting. Carrie Pike should be online virtually, the applicant's traffic engineer. She's prepared with a presentation on what was discussed at these meetings. I also assume Rick Bryant will give a summary to you as well. So I'll leave it up to the board who you'd like to speak next on that.
Yeah, we can, we can jump into the intersection. I mean, we've got a lot to get through tonight, so might as well start somewhere that's as good as anywhere. So Carrie, do you have a question, James?
It's kind of more of a point of order with this new sound system, which is excellent. The volume has increased. I'm noting that the sound when there's a notification event, that very sound, is it possible to mute that sound?
I do not know how to do that. It should, it should slow down, sorry.
I'm thinking the same thing. All right, can we see if Carrie's here and let her in if she is?
Right, so Carrie, as of now, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your camera on. And I am seeing that Rick has just joined the meeting as well.
Great.
All right, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, wonderfully.
Do I also have the ability to share?
Yes, you should.
Okay. Let's see if I can get the right window to come up now. That's always the challenge. So sharing is the little box at the bottom with the arrow, yes?
It is the arrow, yeah, the up arrow.
Okay.
Jeff, I can't believe I'm going to ask this, but is there a way to turn the volume down a little bit?
Yeah, it's saturated.
Maybe on the speaker in the back or something?
Thank you.
All right, can everybody, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm actually mostly going to talk about the roundabout. We have revised the roundabout concepts. We do have the intersection, which I can open up and show as well, but in the two traffic engineers meetings that we had with your peer review traffic engineer, as well as two different engineers engaged by some of our Butters, we came jointly, I think, and I think the others will speak to this as well, to the conclusion that the roundabout, actually, we've kind of gone back as it was asked that we reopen that idea after the last meeting. We've kind of gone back to that being the preference. And so I just want to show a few things here about roundabouts. Hopefully my, there we go. So just a reminder for folks, you know, roundabouts have benefits particularly for safety. They're, they provide a safety improvement with a reduction in fatal and injury crashes versus a traffic signal. And that typically is because there, you have lower speeds. At a roundabout the size that we're talking about, the circulating speeds are typically between 15 and 20 miles an hour. They also reduce conflict points, eliminate wasted time at red lights, and also vehicles idling, which adds, you know, air quality, adds exhaust to the intersection while vehicles are idling. And also typically safer pedestrian crossings, higher bicycle level of comfort. The pedestrian crossings are safer because as a pedestrian, you're only having to look one direction at a time because typically as you cross each leg, and I'll show you this on the plan, you cross to an island, so you only have to look one direction, you cross to the island, and then you have to look the other direction to cross to the other side. So that's a safer condition. So I want to next show you a couple of slides just showing some comparable, some roundabouts in the area that are comparable in size to the concept that we have put together. So this first one is Con Street at Route 5 in North Hampton. And so that, and actually David Loring from PAR, who is one of the Butters' traffic engineers, was able to get these plans from Mast Dot. So we were able to actually look at the measurements of the roundabout, but also some photos here for you. So you can see on the left, the aerial view of the, of the roundabout. And this one is a little unusual in that it only has legs. You are allowed to enter also, I believe, from this parking lot here, but it really only has three kind of streets in it, if you will. And the inscribed diameter of this one is 125 feet, so that's from the outside edge of the circle across through the middle to the outside edge of the circle on the other side. And you can kind of see what it looks like here, but obviously these, I think, are near enough to you that if you were inclined, you could take a, take a drive, maybe see some fall color and appreciate and see what these look like in, you know, in three dimensions as opposed to our, our snips of photos here. So you can see there's typically, as is shown here, there's typically an island in the center with low landscaping. You don't want it to be too tall because you do need to be able to see. And then the red around the center is a truck apron, so that larger vehicles can still maneuver around the circle and use that truck apron basically to ride up on to make their maneuver. But regular passenger cars would just use the, the regular outside asphalt circle. So then the other one that's nearby is Bridge Street at Route 9 in Florence. And this is, I think, Look Park. This left side of the aerial here goes into the park. Route 9 goes north and south. This one is slightly larger, about 10 feet larger, 136 feet. And you can see on this, as you could probably on the other one, what I was talking about with the pedestrian crossings. They only cross half at a time, so you cross to the island and then you cross from the island to the other side. So although the path of travel for pedestrians is a little bit longer because you have to, you have to pass around the outside, but it is safer just because of the way that you're crossing. And again, you can see some, some images here that show the low landscaping in the center and then that truck apron, which can be made of pavers, squirted concrete. You can use a number of different materials for that. So it can be quite, quite nice looking. And then this is the proposed design. I think actually, geez, I do have another plan that I can bring up, or perhaps Luke can bring it up in the room there as well. I think this is a slightly earlier version. We had a little bit of a change to this island on the Mountain View Street side to make sure that a tanker can get in here. We actually are proposing a little truck apron at the end of this island as well to make sure that a tanker truck can still get into this property. This is 100 North Hampton Street. So you can see our inscribed diameter is 134 feet here. And this is actually, so it's about the same size as the, as Route 9 and Bridge Street. And again, you can see the crosswalks there that you cross half at a time and you cross to the island. We're also showing a shared use path on the outside here. And then, you know, in prior iterations during this back and forth with the traffic engineers, we had some discussions about whether or not we could make this work with a, it's kind of a, unbalanced is not the right word, but basically the issue had been the queuing on the southbound direction on Route 10. And the concern that, so we actually developed another concept here that this could be a way that the roundabout could be expanded in the future if there were a need because one of the conditions that we've proposed and that we certainly expect Mast DOT will want as well is monitoring of the traffic from this development. And so if there were a point where we needed a slightly larger roundabout to deal with queuing, we're actually proposing a potential for a two-lane roundabout just on this side that would allow two lanes to enter. And it would also allow a separate lane for folks either coming into the development or if someone came out farther north and wanted to use this to U-turn. So the businesses that are to the north that are on the west side of Route 10 could potentially come out and make a right turn and U-turn using the roundabout instead of, instead of needing to try to make a left turn across the traffic. So we have, I'm going to go back to the other one for a minute. You can see here, for example, this sidewalk is set back a little bit. Sidewalk here is set back a little bit, and the reason for that is so when we worked through this with Mast Dot on how the right-of-way would work, we would want to preserve, make sure we have enough room to be able to put this second plan into place if the monitoring showed that it was needed. And so I think that, and so one of the last things I just wanted, this is a lot of letters and numbers, but Rick Bryant actually asked if we could look at the condition of the existing volumes with the traffic from the full build of the site, not including a background growth rate, which is typically how the traffic analysis is done in a full build condition. There's a background growth rate that's applied for some number of years to whatever the build-out year is. In our case, it was to 2030, so seven years. So he asked, what would it look like if we took that background growth rate out? And for example, the development were built now and we still had, you know, you still have the traffic conditions you have out there, but you have the traffic from the full build of the development. And so that's these group of columns on the left here where it says existing plus build volumes with a single, single-lane roundabout. And you can see here, we have pretty good levels of service, pretty good delays, and also much slower queuing than when, than what we saw with the traffic signal on some of the movements, which is one of the reasons that we've come to this conclusion that we think this can work. This could also be beneficial in that the traffic signal would have been, would not have been triggered until the last phase of the proposed development. So this would provide some control in the area earlier than that. And so it would, you know, basically be up to Mast Dot whether we would put the roundabout in right away or we would, excuse me. Or we would perhaps just build a simple unsignaled driveway to begin. And as the monitoring went, we would work on, work toward building the roundabout. And it's possible too that that might fold in timing-wise with the project that Mast Dot is just beginning on the corridor project for Route 10 in North Hampton Street. And then we also, on the right here, we have, this is future volumes, which I think is with the, with the background growth rate, excuse me. I think that is my last slide, so I will stop sharing so I can see you all again. And I'm happy to take questions.
Carrie, I have a couple ones, just sort of about the timing of all this. So first of all, I think you sort of said it would sort of be up to Mast DOT when the rotary would first be constructed. Is that right?
Roundabout, roundabout.
Roundabout, sorry, roundabout.
There's a, a big difference, and big is the correct word in terms of rotary versus roundabout.
And so is that correct, that that would be up to Mast DOT? Obviously, it's a state highway, so they would be the ones deciding when and if that could go in?
Yeah, I think they would be dictating the timing of it, presuming that they tell us, yes, this makes sense for the, for this location. And also in, like I said, we don't know yet what the proposal is for the corridors. I understand that project is just getting started.
And so then, second question is when, you know, you talked about when and if we would need to go to that sort of second option with the right turn lane coming south. Would that fall under sort of the same warrant system that we've heard about before? Or is that a different analysis with respect to the roundabout?
It's a little bit different. The signal warrants, I mean, it's a similar concept. So you, you know, we would still be looking at the volumes and basically having to, to collect the volumes on a, you know, on a prescribed schedule typically annually, re-analyzing them for the roundabout, doing observations to see how it's operating. As opposed to the signal warrants, there are set like at this number, you, you know, you, and for this many hours in a day, you trigger the need for a traffic signal. So I would say it's maybe a little more squishy on a, on a roundabout just that we have to collect the data and analyze it as opposed to just solely based on the numbers.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Planning board members, any other questions for Carrie?
Just a quick question. What's, what's the size of the Con Street roundabout?
That one is 125 feet in diameter.
125, and it proposes 134?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's worth it to hear from Rick from Stantec at this point, if he's available, please, Jeff. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Hello, this is Rick. Sorry about the lighting.
No problem.
Yeah, we, as Carrie said, we're, we're part of the meetings with various, the consultants. And we're, you know, trying to get to yes, I guess you'd say, and finding a, a plan that would work for the applicant, work for the folks on the west side of the road, and meet the needs of the city in terms of providing for safe operations on, on Route 10. And I think we got there. And not to say that what you're looking at is the, the final plan. We are, again, dealing with this state highway. And the state will have final say on the design details. And we, we knew that from the beginning. And working with, with you and staff, it's, it's always been our objective to at least reach an agreement on the configuration of the intersection and the location of the intersection, and not necessarily the details. So I do think we have agreement on location and configuration such that I'd say the decision's in the board's hands now.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from planning board members for Rick?
Okay. I guess we can jump to some of the other materials that have been submitted. I think, um, just one, if I could, sorry, Jeff. There was, and it came late, so there is an email from Mast DOT. We've considered it an informal document. I mean, it's a public document, but it's an informal indication from, from some folks at Mast DOT that the concept of the roundabout seems viable and is based on data that they would support. There was a note that there could be a requirement for shared use path on both sides of the roundabout. But in theory, it is a plan that, you know, we had been searching for something that's viable to provide to Mast Dot. And they did not do it in-depth review. They have a, they have a lengthy access permit process, but it was an indication that they see merit in it. And so that was something that we had been hoping to see out of whatever design. So I do think Mast DOT, I provided them the most recent set of plans. They have been asking some questions periodically. But I think it is a good sign at some level that at least Mast DOT has seen the concept and would, would review it. And so that was one of the goals that we were trying to achieve.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff.
Can I just touch on one thing of that? And it's not really directed, I'm not sure who's going to answer this. In the materials, and there were a lot, I think I saw that with the roundabout, hopefully using the proper terminology, some of the area to the north wasn't owned by, by the applicant. And that's something that'll need to be resolved as part of this process. I'm referring specifically to around Starbucks, I think. Is that correct? Can anyone, is that incorrect?
I think that's right. I think that there's, that would involve Mast DOT either takings or reorganization or something like that.
And that's, you know, not our purview. I'm not stressed about that. But I am curious about how much land are we talking about? We don't know what they're going to do. But does anyone have a sense? Are we talking five feet, 10 feet, 50 feet? No?
So on the northeast side with Starbucks, there isn't any impact shown. You know, again, Mast DOT is going to do what they want. So if they want a shared use path continuing north, then there may be some impact. But as shown, there is no impact to the Starbucks or Burger King on that side.
Thank you.
Great. So again, lots of materials to go through here. I guess one of the things that might make sense, there was a request for some waivers and some discussion about that. It might be worth it to address that. Don, do you want to lead the charge on that from your letter or?
Don Abel, counsel for the applicant Tasty Top. We are presenting three requests for waivers under the requirements or the conditions of the Smart Growth Zoning District. In every case, it is under the provisions of seven point, where's the provision for waiver? 7.451 provides that the board has the, the ability to make waivers as provided that is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Smart Growth Zoning District. The, I guess the initial one was when we removed the, the building off to the east in the corner, we shifted some of those residential units into the Smart Growth Zoning District. And the building was, and the units were replaced in that fashion. One, to minimize the environmental impact of having that building sitting out there. It was not, you know, not in the flow of the other product, of the other construction. It also shifted some more of the residential units into the, the Smart Growth Zoning District. The SGZD provides that you're not to have first-floor residential use. And as I highlighted in my letter, my sense is from having been in, in the community is that a lot of that resistance was based on residential use that was being built in some of the downtown areas where there was more pedestrian traffic. And so you were, you were bringing that residential use onto the, onto these city streets. In this case, we have first-floor residential use throughout the project outside of the SGZD. This building that we've, we've done, adding the residential units on the bottom are going to then be consistent with buildings that are very proximate to it. And so the, the benefit is, is that we've been able to reduce the environmental impact. We've increased some of the density inside the SGZD. And it really shouldn't have much of an impact on the, the nature of the project itself. And so we're requesting that you consider granting a waiver. It's a, it's just the one building in the SGZD that we're looking to accomplish that on. The second waiver that we're requesting is that originally the plan was developed that we were going to have two restaurant pads as the gateway into the project. And as this project has gone on, the applicant engaged in conversation with a local bank about putting a bank pad in there. And it, it fits the project, I think, better than the restaurant. It reduces a lot of the traffic stops. It reduces the footprint. The size of the bank is significantly smaller. It provides a, another useful function and resource for the community that is going to be housed there by giving them walking access to a bank. This is a, an area, this was originally the underlying district, and the zoning is the SGZ district. We don't look back to the underlying district, but I think it's relevant to at least consider as we're exercising our discretion in, in reviewing this, is that this is the, the highway business district. The original uses, the, the reason why we're, we're looking for a waiver is that when this mixed-use corridor was added, it's my understanding that the planning process was, is that the original table of uses was, was, was adopted and that there were just variables as to what the standards of adoption were going to be and that there really wasn't any inquiry or examination as to what appropriate uses would be in the highway business district. Just whatever was already in the table, we might have made some adjustments. In that this is in the highway business district where such a use would be allowed. And we have banks, both from, both of the local banks, Florence and East Hampton, are very proximate, each within a mile or close to being, and one of them is very much closer. So it's, it's consistent with the use and the pattern in that area. And that I think that the, there wasn't really a concerted notion to disallow banks. I just don't think it was contemplated at the time. At least that's the suggestion, was that it just wasn't contemplated at the time and that it does, I think it fits the project. It provides a, a useful service to the residents that are going to live there. And it was certainly an improvement in terms of the size of the pad and the impact by traffic and other services, sewer, water, whatever. So that it's, it's, it's an increased benefit to the project and, and fits with the community. So we're also asking you to consider granting a waiver for that use. The third one that, that I'm presenting, I think we may have an additional waiver to request with respect to some of the parking issues. But one of the conditions of the, the Smart Growth District was a density table that was provided. And there seems to have been some uncertainty as to, to the manner in which that was implemented and adopted. It provides for a minimum number of units as it currently has been adopted. It provides for a minimum number of units for multifamily dwelling. And there, the, the bylaw provides for 20 units per developable acre. And we're looking at the entire Smart Growth portion of this project as being, I think it's about 15 acres. Once we pull out the roads and some of the, the protected resource areas, we're at about 10. So whether, but you know, that math, it doesn't really matter. It's, I mean, it's, it's a change in the number, but we're still looking at, even if we've got 10 acres in there, we're looking at what the table currently shows as a, a minimum density requirement of approximately 200 units. And right now, as currently presented, there are 58 residential units in there. When it was designed, there was some, it didn't make any sense that that was there. Other, they, the, the engineers hadn't really encountered it, and it didn't really quite even make sense. So what was designed was a project which would fit a mixed use. The proportionate development, we're well in, in compliance with. In addition to this minimum density table that we're confronted with, there's also the requirement that if we have mixed use, that you have to have at least 50% of it be residential. And we're at basically just about a two-to-one ratio, residential to commercial use. I think our commercial use is about 35, 37%. So we, we far exceed that number in terms of what kind of balance we're looking for in these districts. It's just that the minimum number of unit requirement would be astronomical. I, I'm not sure how that code comes to be recommended by DHCD. I don't think it fits this project at all. I'm not even sure how you would, how you could do it. And certainly not having it be any, any sense of, of mixed use. Again, you know, we have to look, we've got two separate zoning districts here, two applications. One is for plan review for the Smart Growth, the other is for a special permit for the R15 district. And each has to stand on its merits. But I think if we're looking for discretion, and it's, it what's, puts the power control back into the planning board's hands, so we do this correctly, we're not just marching blindly, is that I don't know that it was ever a blindly, is that I don't know that it was ever contemplated. I don't, I'm not familiar with any other districts, but we've got a, a, a very comprehensive residential use associated with this entire project. We're providing, the ratios in the Smart Growth district, as I said, far exceed what's required, the minimum required in terms of the proportion. And then when we look at the project as a whole, we are accomplishing our mission of trying to bring affordable housing into the city. And I think that that's a, you know, there's no provision specifically laid out in the code for you to look at that, but I think as part of your, the board's discretion, it's relevant to contemplate that, that we do have over 200 units of housing, affordable housing being brought in. There's minimum requirements that we have to meet as we've expressed before. Once we know how the funding goes with DHCD and some of the other projects, we're looking at increasing those percentages significantly. So we're doing our, our goal, you know, achieving our goal of bringing affordable housing in. It's just that the way the project is designed, and again, I'll, I'll go back to the underlying zoning district. I realize it has no legal bearing, but we are looking at the highway business corridor. And so to have commercial uses up front along the road with smaller buildings and lower buildings so that they're not creating the, the three-story structures on the street with the residences right there on Route 10, that there's a better balance to the project when we have some of that commercial use up front. It's, the purpose was, and you know, it's no secret, there is a, an incentive for the developer to be able to carry some of the expenses by having some commercial projects. But as I said, we're at the 30-something percent level of commercial use and those uses, we've got a daycare and, you know, gymnastics facility. We're not talking about a bunch of, a bunch of restaurants or shops. So that we've, I think it, it's a more consistent fit with the, with the, with the area and that overall the project, I think, does its job of bringing affordable housing in. So we're asking that, and we also look back to the development of this code as we were, as the city, you and the city council were adopting this. The, the materials provided by the DHCD provided that this was a maximum. I think if you look at my letter, it shows the table that they've got and they're calculating maximum units. And that was what was being generated. And then apparently at the, at the end, somehow it got changed to a minimum. It had been contemplated that it was a maximum. I think that's the way we were perceiving it and that somehow it got adopted as a minimum. The, Mr. Bag has prepared a technical memo that kinda outline, that outlines that process. And so it may be that it was even inadvertently put in. You still have the authority to exercise your discretion to waive the requirement, but I think that's another compelling factor that it wasn't even, it may very well be that that wasn't even what was intended. Certainly the, the planner has, has followed the process, has, has, has laid out how that might've happened. So for those reasons, I, I think the project fits a lot better this way. And I think we're still providing a benefit to the community in, in both respects, appropriate development and affordable housing. So we're requesting a waiver from that density requirement under table. It's, it's in my correspondence, is the, the density table that's in there.
James?
Jesse, with your permission, I'd like to dive into those.
Yep.
And state my opinion. We haven't really done much of that yet as a board. And I'm hoping we can maybe start to deal with these and check some of these things off. I'll deal with the last one, the density issue that you just addressed. And I'll state too that the letter came in from the Poscomic Trust, I believe it was, which commented on that and they had a different opinion as to whether or not it was intended when we set that up back in what, '21 with the, with the 20 as a, as a minimum or maximum. And I know that Jeff in his memorandum sort of, it seemed to me at least, said it was a possibility that it may have to be erroneous. Personally, I think 18 is close enough and I would approve a waiver. So that's just where I stand. And that's with regard to the parking being more than maximum, I think it's a bit of a no-brainer, the, the statement that it's likely they may have residents that have more than one car per home. It just makes sense. I would approve that waiver. For the bank use, I think it's obvious a bank can go in there. There's other banks nearby. I would approve that waiver. And for the ground floor residential as well, I would approve that waiver. And that's where I stand.
Don, what's the, the extra parking numbers? Just so we know those.
Unfortunately, we, they, they take some of the engineering stuff off my hands because they're, they're smarter than I am. So I don't have the, I don't have the materials on the, the parking. I've seen it, but I think that Lou or Brian may better be able to address the, the request for the parking waiver.
I'm sharing the screen because this is the only one that hasn't been presented yet.
The parking?
Right. Okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give a quick narrative on the, the parking waiver request. So we are asking for a request, or we're, sorry, excuse me. We are requesting a waiver from the, the parking requirements of, in the SGZD zone because they're maximum parking requirements. And we have shown parking in excess for those uses. So the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual is a resource that uses many case studies to determine parking demand for different land uses. It's widely used by engineers to determine parking demand. So this is what we used, what we typically use to determine parking in, in combination with, you know, if there's real life data available. So we did look at the different uses for this project in the ITE manual and some real life data for the, the gymnastics center. We determined there were some uses that would not have adequate parking if we went by the Smart Growth zoning standards. Multifamily housing, I think, was mentioned already, that zoning says one parking space per unit. There are two to three bedrooms per unit. It just seems unlikely that the occupants would only have one car. The restaurant use, the parking for a 5,000 square foot restaurant seemed low as well. The ITE manual has estimated parking demand that is double that of what is required, the required maximum per the zoning. And finally, the gymnastics center, per the zoning, it would only need seven parking spaces. That would actually be the minimum, which we wouldn't even cover the employees of the facility. So based on similar Roots Gymnastics facilities in, in Westfield specifically, it was determined that the, the facility would need at least 34 parking spaces. So the total zoning shortfall of, of parking spaces came to 104 spaces short of what we believed was necessary. We're proposing 100 more spaces than zoning prescribes. So it's about even.
I mean, that's the one that makes me more uncomfortable than the other ones, to be honest personally, just because I feel like we're trying so hard to reduce paved surfaces and reduce parking, especially where I think you have a lot of potential for shared parking.
Well, I'll break it out a little. I think the argument for housing is a fair argument.
Yeah.
You know, the units, one space for a three-bedroom or even a two-bedroom apartment doesn't seem like reality to me. So an increase in using the ITE guidelines, I think, is a logical approach and more towards reality. You know, those sites of units, even if it's a couple, a teenage child, you're gonna have more than one car per household. I mean, I think that's pretty common through all households in this town. If you just look at random driveways, you're gonna see usually more than one car.
I think one of the smart growth that's like aspirational for the smart growth concept, right? That it's supposed to reduce demands for cars, especially if it's like a densely populated area and there's public transportation. But I would agree that's currently not what a typical residence would use.
So I think if you break it out and maybe look at these one at a time would be helpful, maybe more helpful if you, if there's some pushback or some reconsidering. Because personally, I'm, I find it reasonable for the housing and the gymnastics center as well. It's the restaurant to me that I think there could be some discussion on 100 or so spots for a, you know, sit-down restaurant. I think there's room for some debate there personally speaking, especially with the adjacent parking nearby, you know, the bank. I mean, there could be some overlap here. I think that's where personally I would push back a little.
Yeah, the gymnastics center to me seems very logical. I mean, seven doesn't make much sense at all, but I do think part of the pitch here for smart growth is that there's a lot of parking for different uses that aren't gonna be used at the same time, right? So your bank's probably not overlapping with your restaurant kind of concept of parking, right? But...
And if you look at the site plan, you know, the bank parking, there's kind of two rows of stalls there, back row stalls for another residential, your gymnastics is kinda going around the corner and your restaurant's kind of adjacent there. So there's, you know, we're asking folks maybe to make a couple hundred-foot walk to use some of the bank, you know? And that's not unreasonable to reduce some of the restaurant or something along that. That's kinda where my head's at at least, is like there are other shared spots in proximity that if there are some specific restaurant spots that could have some reduction, I think it's a fair conversation to have.
I also think that looking at the floor plan, there's many units that are three bedrooms and you probably would not have a one-car family with three bedrooms.
And, and the, and the provision too, what's not mentioned are the, the green spaces as well. There's proposal for a 61 additional potential future spots that are shaded on the plans that are not being proposed outright. But you know, through, you know, you know, should, when the sites, if it's operational once it's up and running, if there's just clearly a, a parking issue, they've identified some spots that they would kind of earmark for that potential problem should it arise. So I think even asking for a slight reduction as previously stated, should that be handcuffing and prove to be a problem, there's already kind of a mechanism in place that, you know, potentially we put it as a condition, they come before the board before any of these green spaces are, are able to be put into use. But there is a relief valve there in place should our judgment or my logic that I just laid out be false logic. You know, there is a, a relief valve there.
I also think that there, because this is phased, a phased construction, that we, I don't know if there's a mechanism to evaluate parking as we go through the phases and when we get to phase four, you know, look at all the parking that's in phases one through three and do we need all that extra parking in phase four after all?
I believe that the, that might not work because the latter phases are, I think, more heavily loaded on residential, which if you're talking to me, you already know my opinion on the residential.
Yeah.
Fair to ask though.
All right.
Can we hammer that out?
Well...
It sounds like we're talking potentially about maybe a slight reduction in some places? Is that what you're proposing?
Personally, yeah.
Fair.
I believe it's just the restaurant, the, the ask for the additional on the restaurant is the only one I, I believe is maybe a nice to have and not a need to have.
My hope is that we can come to, you know, come to something like exactly how much are we proposing gets taken off if we are? How many spots?
Jeff?
I just have a question for the board and the applicant, but based on the site plan that's shown on the screen here, you know, just an understanding of where the additional restaurant spaces are, because I think in this plan, it seems to show that there's about 41 proposed spaces next to the restaurant with then, you know, 12 future on-demand. But then the calculation was much higher, so 100, or I forget what the number was if it was 100 for the additional restaurant spaces. Is it contemplated that they are on the bank side, for lack of a better description? Okay.
That's where they would be? Okay.
So there already is shared parking between the bank and the restaurant pad? Is that what I'm understanding?
Conceptually, yeah.
So that those spots that we are thinking were shared are actually in the table shown as restaurant spots. So there's, okay.
Frank DeMarinas, Tasty Top. The, the restaurant prototype for that facility is actually 130 parking spots. I don't like building parking spots that aren't getting used. It's not fun. But I definitely don't like being in a situation where people are parking in the street causing traffic problems. And it's happened to, to other businesses that we built. So I'm very cautious with it. And I think we did a really good job earmarking spaces in case we need it, but we didn't go overzealous. We don't, it costs money to build parking spots. They're pavement, gravel, everything like that. We don't want to do it unless we absolutely have to. So I want to say we were very conservative with the number of parking spots that were promoted. I think we're light with 34 for the gymnastics side. I know we are. I know we are. You know, I've ran the gymnastics company since my daughter was five. She's 30, 23. So, and it's, it's light. We, we really, we took your advice, we eliminated as many as we could and hopefully that it'll mixed use and it'll all blend together. And, and we don't have to build those shaded areas. We don't want to, you know? But I really think we had a really nice balance.
Yeah, I'm just hesitant, like the idea of paving 104 extra spots on a parcel just, it's a huge heat sink, it's more impervious surface. I don't know, it just seems, there's already a lot of parking on there, but I guess we'll...
And your comment, if I could, was about the total number, which would be phased over time, if I understood correctly? Because I think the phasing, just as a reminder, would be the Roots Gymnastics facility would be first phase, then the residential apartment buildings would be second phase. So some of the, some of the excess parking comes with the, the dwelling units and then some comes in the final phases with the, with the pad site and the, the restaurant and the bank.
I think the, the restaurants, what, like 50 spaces of that 100 that you're referencing?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I understand the applicant's premise and point here and his experience with the gymnastics center. That's certainly not being questioned. I guess to answer your question more directly, Jamie, potentially those on the bank exit, there's a bank of, I don't know, looks like a dozen or so spots. Could those potentially be moved to the earmarked shaded? And we could see, you know, if, if there's people parking in the street or if there's some huge issue, since those will kind of be built out in the earlier phases, there'll be plenty of opportunity for heavy equipment coming back on site, doing more paving work, doing more earthwork, pave those 12 spots instead of doing it right off the rip, right off the bat, to do it in phase two, phase three and give it some space, some time to breathe, some time to operate, some time to get some eyes on it. There's 12 spots, there's a compromise. And, and we're not saying they can't be built, we're just saying can we flip those to green space? We're allowing more than, more than zoning. I think there's a good case. I think applicants built a good, sound case for that. Is that potentially a middle ground?
I love the way you're looking for solutions, I'll tell you that. I think if it's all right with you, can we ask the applicant how they feel about that?
Sure.
Could we come up with like a number that he wants to earmark, not pave, a, a logical number? And then we will choose the locations of where they are because that I know we're gonna need right away between the restaurant and, but maybe on the island where we're showing, we could take out like 24 spots for now that I think may, if, if we're not gonna use some, that's where they would be? So if you...
I wouldn't be against that, Frank. I mean, you're, you're, you're do a lot more developing than I do personally, so I'm not trying to dictate if you've got a better solution, I'm all ears. But you understand the sentiment, I guess?
Also, I think...
I understand the sentiment and I'm, I'm okay with it, as long as we know we have it there in the future in case, so no one's parking in the street.
I'm with you on it.
And, and...
I get the, if that happens...
Everybody gets aggravated, it's not safe.
Yeah, that's not, and no one wants that on both sides. So if that's the case, and again, if it's proving that it's not working, we'll, we'll touch on the green spaces and we'll get it to problem fix if it becomes a problem. But if you've got 20 some odd spaces that you find better for your operation, I'd...
A part of the condition is we put 20, 24 more spaces because I really, the, the, the residential use, the affordable housing, we're gonna, I think we might be even shy on, on that because they're two- and three-bedroom units. They're not single units.
Right.
If you're gonna get those cars. But, so let's say that's a fair ask, right? That it needs, you need to have those spaces for those here because they're not your standard single, single bedroom.
I agree with you on that.
The Roots, the gymnastics is for sure. So there's a question of, of the restaurant. So put in a condition that we earmark 24 spaces of, take them off of the site, earmark them as grass for now, and then if we need to build them, we'll build them. And, you know, I think that's a great compromise.
I agree.
I hope I don't have to build them. I don't, I don't want to. I hope I don't have to build them, I don't want.
I understand, yeah.
Well, so wait, are we, I mean, the condition is just that you're agreeing not to build them unless you want to build them? Or do you come back in and?
Well, we can come back.
I, I think for those green spaces, that we're going to create a condition.
The concept is they come back for approval, yeah. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, yeah, I mean.
However you want to word it, I don't care.
I want to think that concept.
I think we're on the same page here.
We're intent on adding in a condition that the green spaces require coming before the planning board. And we're going to ask that these 20, that 24 more spots be added to the green spaces.
That's correct.
In that front portion, because I think, I think there's two sort of sections, right? The residential part, those are where they are, and I don't think they serve much purpose for shared parking. But the front section, I think people might park at one place and walk through it.
I really think that these would be, these two rows right here would be the ones that.
Yep, I think that's logical.
Okay, let's move on, this is a good.
Okay, all set. Thank you.
Does anybody on the planning board have any objection to say the bank use waiver? To me, that is just a feature of the overlay district.
I think the attorney able laid it out pretty well.
And how about the ground floor residential, I think that also seems logical to me where it's these removed residences. It's not a commercial street or downtown area.
Well, but, yeah, no issues.
The, the density one to me is, at first I thought it was more interesting because it might be a question of whether we adopted the wrong language in our bylaws. But I'm not sure that's particularly relevant to the waiver concept. It's just a matter of whether this density generally satisfies sort of the goals of the smart growth overlay district, regardless of the language. Personally, I think that that, it does, but I'm happy to hear from any other planning board members if they have concerns or thoughts about that. And I realize we're sort of getting into nitty gritty and there's still potentially insurmountable problems for people on the project, but might as well check things off.
Get these out of the way.
Yeah, if it was like 10 or 12, but 18 to 20 is.
Yeah, that seems.
Agreed.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, so we, if no one else has any other questions first, all right. So I, I had a couple of questions just because we now have sort of the full plans, and I don't know if this is Luke or Brian or whoever. One of the ones I wanted to look at was the lighting, we got the lighting plan. And it seemed like there's some bleed over on some of the borders, I'm wondering if you can pull that up, Jeff, maybe we can look at it. I just want to make sure, I mean, because we have, on one side we have businesses, the other side it's residential. And then the back seems to be, I mean, it's largely wetlands and conservation area. So I think all of those sort of have varying degrees of concern for light spillage.
C9, thank you.
Did you bring one of those for the board?
There is one in the back.
I've got one here.
There is one.
Wise guy.
I flagged one.
So, Mr. Chair, are you referring to like this stuff here?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, and I can't quite read the, it's very fine print, but.
So the way our software works is we set a limit on where we want the photometric analysis to be done. The majority of those numbers are 0.0.
Okay, that's.
So it doesn't dismiss it if it has no light because it's within the proximity of the property. So we kind of set it like 10 feet around the whole property line.
It's going to give you a measurement regardless, even if that measurement is 0.0.
All this is zero, all this is zero.
I couldn't even zoom in that close on my PDF version, so I wanted to confirm that for the record. I mean, you folks would be.
It's a little bit better on the.
On the zoom and on the sections, yep. But so, I mean, you folks are comfortable with the concept that we're not going to have light spillage over any of the borders of the property, is that right? Okay, all right. Because I think especially with the south side with the residences, but also, as our former planner Jessica Allen would say, think of the peepers, right? I mean, there's a lot of wildlife on the backside that I think requires that darkness too. So I just wanted to confirm that part and that we're on the same page there. One of the other ones is the planting plan, I just want to look at some of the buffering and get that on the record as far as both between the different apartment buildings, but also between neighbors. Take your time.
Plantings, that's where he's heading.
Yes, planting plan, sorry. The overall landscape plan, C3.
I'm close to sharing it online here.
Thank you.
Did you have a specific area?
Yeah, so, oh, you're up, yeah. So I, I guess first of all, what I'm really curious about is if you can confirm the buffers and the plantings along, I guess it's the south side there when you're sort of looking at the neighbors over on the Colonial Ave side and all of that, and what's going to be going in there?
So zoning requires the 35 foot buffer between the HP. So a lot of it in the, in this area is existing vegetation to remain.
Yep.
Doesn't get better than that. Where we have a lack of buffers is we're proposing a dense arborvitae plantings. And I believe that there's already a fence along this property line as well.
I think that's right. So are those going in, how big will they be planting for the arborvitae's?
Three or four feet of planting.
Okay, and that goes at least along those first two parcels there, okay. And then the rest of that side looks like it's sort of the remaining tree cover that's not being taken down, right? The other couple of sections, one is sort of the complete other side. I think it's a part back in the residential area where it really kind of has a straight shot up to like, I'm blanking on the name of the street.
Highland.
Highland. And so, and I know there's, there's like a empty parcel there and a meadow and all of that, which of course it might not be forever. But, so what's going in? Now you got me lost, Jeff.
Sorry.
We got it, so this was an addition.
Here we go, yep.
This was an addition on the latest plan.
Yep.
So the same thing proposed for this gap here.
Yep.
This doesn't have as specific of a requirement, there's another section that has a buffer requirement, it's not the 35 foot. But all this remains existing vegetation. This, this area here was actually a wetland resource area. And there's wetland plantings that have already been in place there. So we can't do a traditional tree in there, plantings in there. But there were maple trees, there was some other wetland vegetation planted there already. Such as you see kind of splash through the middle. And then, once we get out of that resource area, we're picking up with that same type of landscape arborvitae buffering.
And so then the other one, I think the zoning requires buffers between the residential buildings, is that right, Jeff? Am I remembering that right? Some sort of screening or?
There is a requirement under 8.3 somewhere.
And I saw in one of your letters that you sort of confirmed that, but I don't, I didn't see it on the plan. Yeah, 8.334, so this is on page three of your October 10th letter. The requirement, assuming it's quoted right, multi-family dwellings shall be separated from adjacent properties by buffer strips, consistent with trees or fencing. Screen, I thought there was one between the buildings, am I making that up, Jeff?
The only thing I'm aware of is a big 10 feet between the buildings.
Okay.
We have a typical landscaping plan of the individual buildings.
Yep.
But plantings between them.
Okay. Yeah. It says 30. Yep.
Looks like it's just between adjacent properties.
Yeah, it's adjacent properties.
That space is critical for fire departments to do that we don't want. In the way, if they were to put a ladder up, it will move out and so.
Oh yeah, no, nothing that close to the buildings.
Because it's, they are, they're as close as code, building code allows. So I'd rather not put something in the way of firefighters.
And, and then my other question just about trees is obviously there's, you know, you guys have made efforts to remove, like to reduce the tree removal, but there's a lot of trees coming down, especially in that back section. Is there any other appetite or concept where you could be planting some of these other, some mature trees in some of these open spaces that are being retained? Because we're losing a lot of trees.
I'll double down on that and just ask if there's any appetite for the East Hampton's Pollinator Action Plan.
Yeah.
Just, you know, it doesn't have to be in the forefront of the landscape stuff, but along these, these kind of edges and buffer areas. There's, there's some, some guidance on just some species that don't need maintenance, reduces the amount of lawn care and.
I think that gets to the same idea, I mean, I think that it's, like using that as opposed to just sort of doing a meadow or a field.
So like this here, for example, this half pattern?
Yep.
That was one of.
Remember that's a touchscreen.
As part of our back and forth with the Conservation Commission, that was one thing that came up. So all of these areas, like the detention basins are.
That's what, because I noticed you noted the different seed mix, I picked up on that, it just didn't explicitly say pollinator. I was just, that's, that's a great intent.
What about any new tree plantings, other than sort of buffering with arborvitae's, just to sort of get some more trees back in on the property?
I mean, there's 100 and, 200.
I think there's like 190, yeah, but I mean, I think a lot of those are arborvitae's for screening, right? It's, no?
I would say it's probably a quarter of ours is arborvitae's.
Okay.
And the rest are shade or street trees.
Okay. Okay.
So.
200 trees include arborvitae's.
So I think I saw that it's what, 0.85 acres that's being cleared, something like that, am I close?
We're, we're closely replicating the trees that have been taken down with new trees, very close.
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's by pure number of trees, right? I mean, it's not.
That's impossible.
Well, no, I mean, you can replace a 100 year old elm tree with a four foot arborvitae, that's one to one, but it's not the same. I think that's what you're commenting on, but. Okay.
Mike, if I could ask a quick question, so on this plan, before I move it, there are street trees proposed throughout. I was wondering, can you, do you know what those are for the table? Because I, I do think those won't be arborvitae's, I don't know if that's relevant to the board that.
Our standard is, is the letter designates to the table on this, on the landscape plan, and then the number is the number. So for this example, it's one A. And then when there's a clump, it would be nine of the Ds, so.
Red maple.
So the A is a red maple, for example. The B is a honey locust, so these are all trees that were pulled right out of MASTEP recommendations for salt tolerance for, and there's been a lot of back and forth. We did reach out to the tree ward and there's been a lot of feedback at this point because they're privately owned trees. But we're not married to the species by any means, but that's what we found to be a good balance of tolerance and diversity.
And the other one I think that just might be helpful for people to hear, if you can sort of explain, we've heard a bit about the loss of the view. And I, part of the thing that's interesting is sort of the change in grade going back to the site. Can you give a little bit of detail on that about sort of how, how far down those taller buildings will be in the back as far as impacting the view?
I think if you bring up the grading plan and just show those contours, just note the elevations and then the heights here buildings, it should kind of paint the picture.
So the intent of that narrative was to explain that the, the buildings out front are one story, they're, they're really low height buildings. But the site naturally slopes away from North Hampton Street towards the rear. So that as you get back towards some of these buildings, for example, here, these are the taller three star residential buildings, 35 feet maximum per state of easy map. These buildings here are, the ground floor of that building is 18 feet below North Hampton Street. So looking at a flat plane, that 35 foot building becomes 18 feet of perceived height. So they're not, they're not going to be taller than the trees that are there that now remain. We all did a site watch, we saw that standing trees along the rear of the property, that's 40, 50, 60 foot tall trees that will remain. And those will be much taller than the tallest building on site. But this is a one story building, this is a one story building, this is a one story building. We don't get into the taller buildings till we're 600, 700 feet away from North Hampton Street. And everything's gone downhill, like this at 15, 16, 18, 20 feet from North Hampton Street.
Thank you.
Seems pretty clear.
Yeah, no, I think it's interesting though, because it does, unless you go out there and walk it, yeah, yeah. And even when you're out there and you're looking from the road, I don't think you realize just how much that grade drops off once you get past the front row. The only other thing, and Jeff, maybe this is a question for you here, when I was looking through the technical memo on 8.333, there was a comment about the reduction of the roadway width, where the city engineer had requested reducing it.
It was one foot, right, a one foot difference?
Yeah, I, I just want, I mean, have we talked to the city engineer about that? Has there been any, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's crucial to me, but I also like to defer to our city engineer on anything.
I mean, I, the way I would summarize it is I believe the initial road width was 24 feet. The city engineer asked for 22 feet and the applicant said 23. But in the same request, the city engineer asked for wider sidewalks as well. And so the applicant did accommodate the wider sidewalks.
Okay.
And the reduction of the road width. I think the, the applicant's memo, so it was probably, there was a memo dated April 28th. And I think the, the reference was related to emergency vehicle access. And so I don't know if the applicant wants to explain any of that anymore, but that was my understanding of how.
I remember the discussion, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing that. And then the only other thing I had flagged, and again, Jeff, maybe this is for you, but there's the provision for setting a bond or a surety. And I'm not sure what we need to do on that front as far as trying to come up with what needs to be covered. I know it's like for performance of the conditions, but I think that generally sort of subsumes a lot of the project too. So do we need to come up with a number ourselves? Should we be asking the applicant to propose a number and maybe have our city engineer look at that or something before next meeting or?
Yes, I think the thing I can offer of true information is that the stormwater features, so all the stormwater throughout the project will be subject to a bond with the Conservation Commission. Other than that, I think the board needs to discuss what you would be expecting to see and what would the bond cover. So that was a point, I think you had raised the question earlier on, but we don't know what we would be, you know, what would, what would we be expecting the applicant to financially secure? Is it the roadway, is it the, is it the parking, is it the landscaping? So just having a discussion of what the bond would be for, I think is necessary.
Well, I mean, I guess the overarching goal for a bond or a surety, right, is that if you get at some point in this process and it falls apart, that we can at least either perform the last parts and get it done, or clean it up, or get to a different stopping point, I don't know. Any other, I mean, Chris, Danny, you guys live in this world sometimes.
Maybe with solar, you know, you're left with blight behind, I'm not sure that's the key, you know, what do you have, like a pad leftover that's potentially buildable or something? I'm not sure what.
Right, so if you have half of the driveway and, and an empty parking lot, like what are you actually doing? I think it's more a situation like when you get 80% done and they haven't, you know, finished part of the parking lot or the, you know, I think the, obviously the waters, the stormwater.
Personally, is the nature of how this all fits together and that there is some commercial and also some residential. And these come at different times. And that, you know, this is being kind of approved as a project that provides different benefits, including residences. And if the beginning gets built, it's largely commercial and we don't see the town benefit of housing ever come into play, that to me is like kind of a false delivery of expectations for approval. So that's the way I look at it personally, I'm not looking at it as an infrastructure thing, is it, is more of a delivering all of the various, because there's, I've counted maybe 10 very passionate, active groups that are interested in this project with varying needs, largely sometimes ignoring the needs of the other groups and focusing on their own, which is fine. But in order to sell this or have it work effectively, it's almost like you need the, it all to come through and not just one piece. So that's the way I would look at some kind of a bond.
But that's going to be like an insurmountable number, right? Because you're basically asking them to set aside a bond to build the whole project.
Which is 30 million.
I mean, I suppose you could do phasing, the bond could be tied to the phases, right? And then it's a little bit more palatable for what you're talking about. I mean, I'm thinking about things, I'm thinking more about not finishing work, but as, as like, you know, they go belly up and there's been no buffering, you know, or things like that. They haven't put any of the plant things.
Or stormwater.
Obviously the stormwater. I think Jeff's point, I think Concom will cover that one. So like, that might be not something we have to worry about, but I think it is like the conditions, right? So it's like providing enough of the parking, providing the screening, providing the buffering, dealing with that kind of thing, but.
Would I wonder if, if the board would potentially ask the applicant to walk through the phasing plan? It may be helpful just to get an understanding of how the project is phased in your approach to the project? Because I don't know if that will help answer what we might be asking about. I have the phasing plan pulled up. I'll share if that's, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility for the applicant to.
Yeah, I think that's.
Can I toss out one more thing just to add to that? If the applicant already has an idea of a surety that they'd be willing to put forward, I'd be curious to see what that might, or hear from you what that.
Frank Demeranis again, Tasty Top. I didn't put a lot of thought into a bond for it because it is a complicated topic. And everything that was said was righteous, what I've heard so far, so I appreciate it. Sounds logical and intelligent. So one key thing is, we want to make sure the stormwater is put in place. So Concom's got that portion of it taken care of. You guys aren't going to ever build, be the developers. Towns never do that. That's impossible. So we don't need to put a number to that. And you're not going to put infrastructure in place that you're not going to, you're not, you're not going to build it. The housing is the biggest catalyst on this project, by the way. It's not the commercial development. The housing is really the biggest catalyst because of the tax incentive financing with it to be able to build it. And it fell in place with the whole program of the city. So I guess it would be some security, so let's say something happens, I die or whatever, and we got a certain, certain part into it. And all right, let's clean up the mess a little bit and just tidy everything up. So if you were to put like a million or $2 million into like, okay, construction stopped right now, we, and there was some disturbance, we got to re-lome it and seed it and walk away from it and just make it acceptable until the next generation comes in and finishes the project. That's, I'm looking at the worst-case scenario right now because I want, I want to be able to finish this project while I'm still alive. And something like that catastrophic doesn't happen. So a million, $2 million is appropriate for funds for a city to walk in and then clean up something, not redevelop everything or anything like that, but clean it up. But that, that sounds.
What about the idea of not having to put up a bond for the entire, all of the phases, but sort of doing this for each step? So if you're in phase one, and then, and then you come back after phase one, and you say, okay, we're done with phase one, you know, maybe phase two is actually more, more of expensive bond because you're getting into the housing or something. Like, does that make sense to you?
You're just one bond that just keeps rolling until the project's over with. How insurance agents explain bonds to me is they die in the vine. You know what I mean? They, they, they never really go away. They're always there. They die with the fact that no one's going after them. That's all. So they just keep going. It's an insurance policy. I'm not putting a million or $2 million down. It's just an insurance policy. So they'll die in the vine. So it'll go through the whole project.
So just looking online, an average performance bond is 3% of construction cost. So if construction's 30 million, is that what I heard? Construction's roughly 30 million? And that would be a million. So it's in line.
That's pretty close.
I mean, that's a lot of money to be able to do some cleanup work.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't seem.
It won't be over the whole project. It'll be a small area.
It doesn't seem crazy to me. I mean, maybe it is worth, before our next meeting, having the engineer look at that and see what they think, but I don't, that seems logical.
The only thing that's not clear is the expectation of what the bond will cover. And so that's why I was hoping the applicant goes through the phase plan, because what we all need to understand is that the stormwater infrastructure will get installed. But the rest of the site will not be disturbed until they're in that phase.
Right.
So I just, if that's clear to everybody, I don't know what we would ask the city engineer. I don't know if he would know what he's being asked to determine the value of, if it's the.
Yeah.
And the performance bond goes like, like the applicant said from beginning to end, so the $1 million is there for phase one, all the way through to phase four.
Correct. In the event that a phase of the project is not completed,
Yep.
it would cover things necessary to, to shore up the site or to provide landscaping that hadn't been finished.
Right.
But it wouldn't, it is contingent upon the phases.
Right.
I believe.
I think that makes sense.
I don't, I don't agree that it's phased.
Okay.
No disrespect, but it's really just, let's say, let's say we did a part of four and part of three or something like that. And it was, what's disturbed that's white that doesn't look right? To clean that up, plant some trees appropriately. And that's what it would be to more. It's not.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? So it could be a million different variations of it. If you have a bond for the whole project, you have a bond for the whole project.
Yeah, and I think even if you've moved on from, you know, phase two to phase three, and again, we go with the worst-case scenario, project falls apart, there may still be things that need to be kept up with phase two, that you could be able to hit the bond for that too.
Would it be the board who would want to have the, a public meeting, public hearing, some kind of way to be involved in that discussion of what would be remaining under that situation? Or how would we, how would we activate the bond?
I mean, I think the city, the city is, the city is the party under the bond. That would be the beneficiary. They could make a claim.
Yep.
I don't think it would be us.
No, that's correct. The city is insured.
And they would, they would be able to deal with the bonding company and make a claim and either collect or not.
Okay. I may be missing the, the gist of the, the real meat of it, but you know, if, who would be making the decision that something wasn't complete and this should be completed with that money?
I think that would be the building inspector enforcing our special permits, like plan approval, all that stuff in this scenario.
And it would be clear if you're in a phase and then, and then the next phase is just not going to happen, that there's an issue going on.
Well, like you get in these situations all the time where you're fighting with the developer to do something, and they're saying they're gonna, but they don't. And there's always this question, like, do we just make a claim against the bond now? And that's just going to be a question for, and I don't think it will be us in this scenario. I think it would be the city, probably the mayor through the building department.
I feel like Jeff's raising a point that's, I think, saying, what's the criteria to trigger the bond? And we're saying a phase doesn't get completed. And that does seem rather nebulous.
I think it's any, it's not complying with any condition. So like, when you have a bond on a construction project, if you haven't satisfied any of the conditions of the project, whether it's a capital C condition or just part of the plans that are approved, you always have this back and forth with the developer to say, you need to do this, either no, I don't, or yes, I will. And you can make a claim with the bonding company, and then they'll hear from the developer and decide whether it's a valid claim or not. But I think that it's just for, it's a performance bond to, you know, satisfy the conditions of the plan.
Conditions of the plan group. Yep, okay.
And I think with regard to the, this is just my opinion now, with regard to the money, this project is, is a large project. It's big in scale. And I doubt you'll be able to get a sufficient bond in size, one way or the other. I think a million dollars is a fine number. I would.
Okay, with the number.
One other question I did have that I forgot. So we, we looked at the roundabout plan, but the general plans don't have the roundabout on that. Does the roundabout change any of that layout for the substance of what's happening in the entryway? Do you understand my question?
Yeah.
Okay.
The roundabout, the entrance driveway into the site does get shifted a little further south, just to be able to make that radius to the north. It's not.
Will it make any changes? I mean, it's not going to move either the pad sites, I know, but is it going to move parking spots? Or is it really just sort of moving?
It won't affect parking. The only thing it might affect a little is landscaping and lighting.
Okay. I figured since it wasn't on the drawings, that it was not going to be essential to any of that layout, but I just wanted to confirm that.
I have a question on that. There was a draft of some conditions that the board has, and that will be posted online for, you know, there for discussion. It had been a recommendation, I think, of the peer reviewer initially, that the viability of the roundabout is strong and has been tested. It's backed up by the data. It, the, the alternate signal option has not been fully explored. It kind of didn't, it didn't continue because the roundabout started to, to look more viable. So there is a recommended, a recommended condition that, you know, any significant change from the preferred roundabout as a result of the MASTDOT permit process shall be presented to the board. And then I think what this is supposed to say, I think that's to suggest that if it turns out that the roundabout is not feasible and it turns back into the light configuration, that that should come to the board. And the board should decide whether that's a significant change or a minor change to the overall scale or the interaction with the abutting property owners. So I just wanted to flesh that up in terms of.
I mean, I'm torn on this because I, I like the idea of being able to give MASTDOT like, to any applicant, two options and say like, if, if not the roundabout, then this. But I'm not sure that that's going to get done anytime soon to the level of everyone's satisfaction. So I think I personally am more interested in the idea of putting all the eggs in this basket and.
Yeah, similarly, the way I'm looking at it is we're putting our best foot forward and our preference in front of the state regulators that have jurisdiction on this highway. And if it were to come back to us, or there'd be some deviation from that, it would be the state authority that's making a better judgment or a different judgment. Not us. It would be the transportation leaders of the state, you know, having this, making these decisions that what we put in front of them, they have a better solution. So to me, it's, I don't think I would have the, would not fight it back against that. If MASTDOT says they have a better solution, then the best one that we came up with in eight months with three different professional traffic engineers, a passionate town, passionate board, if that were to come back, what would we say? You know, so I, I just, I like that we could leave it in there, but I think putting more work into a backup option is time wasted.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like you're kind of saying two, two sides of the same coin, and now I'm confused what you actually prefer, because.
I prefer to.
Just say roundabout and leave it.
Leave it to MASTDOT is going to have the jurisdiction anyway.
Don't they see everything in the meetings anyway? I mean, they'll, they'll see what we're presenting to them, but they have access to all the data of the discussion. So I mean, I think, isn't the question really, do we include this condition? Which requires them to come back to us. And if I understand what you said right, and please let me know if I'm not, is that you're saying no. And I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't see the, what, what would happen if there was a, if it's from MASTDOT making that change, making the, the change. If it's coming from MASTDOT, I don't see the reason why we would need to weigh in on it.
I guess that's the hard part, right, is whether, whether it would be coming from MAST. I guess we could have a condition that says if MASTDOT requires an alternative plan, right, or something like that. So it's not simply, I mean, I, it sounds like the applicant is on board with the roundabout as their preferred solution too. But let's imagine a scenario where they get in front of MASTDOT and they say, actually, we want a traffic light, right? And MASTDOT is satisfied with it, but we would prefer the roundabout, right? Because I agree, I'm not going to second-guess MASTDOT.
Well, I guess if, if it's kind of the, if it would play out the way that I think it would play out, even having it in there, so let's just say we, it changes, MASTDOT changes it, having the applicant come in front of us and showing that it was changed and that MASTDOT changed it, I guess that's not a huge deal either. Like whether or not we're going to push back against MASTDOT's changes is where, that's my point, is I don't see that really.
No, and what I'm saying is it's not MASTDOT changes that I'd be nervous about. It's that, I mean, we've said all along, right, and we could have said this eight months ago, right? Well, let's just let MASTDOT work on the intersection, right?
And then we came to the point of let's come to our.
Our best.
The town's idea of the best.
Best proposal.
And that's the roundabout.
Yeah.
That's what we've done.
Right.
I tend to agree. Put forward the roundabout.
But forward the round, and if it comes back with changes, we've already put forward our suggestion for the best. So if somebody knows better, then what? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I guess I'm just not honestly familiar enough with the process of how that's going to happen with MASTDOT as opposed to whether they'll be the one driving the planning or just approving plans that are proposed.
I think leaving it even in as a condition, it's not, it's not going to harm anything. I don't think it's going to really trip up the applicant. I just think, I just don't under, I'm not sure there's much we would do with it at that time. If we have some power and control as a board to look back into it, to put forth another option, I guess leaving it in opens that possibility.
Yeah.
Well, so the way, the way the condition is set up is a hierarchy so that there is the plan approval and the special permit, if it's granted, would be conditioned upon the applicant obtaining any and all applicable permits and approvals from MASTDOT. So that's a driveway access permit primarily. A final certificate from the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, so that's the MEPA process, and an order of conditions or a superseding order of conditions from MASTDOP. So those are primary requirements after this process leaves you guys. Then a secondary part of that would be that is, initially, it's geared towards information sharing. Because what we have seen work well is an opportunity for the board to be aware of what's going on and how a project is actually taking shape.
Okay.
So then it's prior to commencing any site work associated with any part of the project, the applicant shall present final plans and permit-approved and, and permit-approved plans by MASTDOT as well as any final approval from the, from MEPA and the Conservation Commission at a public meeting. So that is strictly information sharing.
I think that's.
And then it's the, the third level of the hierarchy is that any significant change from the preferred roundabout plan as a result of the MASTDOT process will be presented to the planning board. Then you would decide whether it's minor or whether something is significantly different about this that would require re-notification and going through the process again.
And that's where we could also determine whether there's anything we could do about it anyway.
Sure. I see that value now.
And then the last one is sort of the regular thing we have in all of our permits, which is any deviation from the plans they've submitted, they come back and say, minor or major, and we either approve it administratively or re-notice a public hearing.
And given that that's in there, I wonder if this isn't redundant. Just saying.
I think, I think you're right, it would be included in that, but I think that it's good to carve it out anyway, because I do think Jeff's point about having a hearing, I mean, I'll be curious to hear what happens after MASTDOT looks at all this.
Well, so would the public.
Right. I think that's important to get it in one place and people can keep following up on the project.
Yep.
I think that's benefit enough to leave it in.
Yeah, that makes sense. So. I'm inclined at this point to, well, what do, what do people think for procedure here? I mean, I think that we've talked a lot about, there's a lot of findings that are in Jeff's memo that I think need to be converted into a potential decision. And then people are going to have to decide on each one whether we think that the facts support that based on how they're going to vote, right? But I think we've also talked about a lot of conditions, some in here, some in the technical memo, that could be put into a draft decision. Yeah, James.
I love everything you just said.
But.
No, but, no, but this document that Jeff's provided, which I know is a draft, I think, just as we just did on that particular potential condition, maybe if we can just kind of walk through it for each potential condition and say, yes, put that in the draft that we're asking for the next meeting and.
I think that's good. I think there's also, I mean, I would just note, right, like the, the 76-page thing that Jeff put has a lot of languages, language about condition waivers and stuff like that, that I think would need to get into a draft decision. Sorry. But.
I did go through, I'm not a perfect human here, but I did go through Jeff's commented zoning board, the 80-page one that you're referencing, and tried to do the one-to-one to see if they were in here.
Yeah.
I did note that I believe, I'll claim like 90% of.
Yeah, definitely most of them were. I mean, I went through and just sort of underlined every time you mentioned condition. And I feel like there were a lot more.
I agree, maybe a double check.
Yeah, I think that that, but James, I think I like your idea of sort of going through these, and then I do want to open it up to the public to get some feedback on this stuff too. So that next one down after these first three has to do with easement to cross the land of Seltzer to connect to the city sewer, or an alternative sewer connection plan has been reviewed and approved by the DPW. I think that's essential.
Yep, agreed.
Phase three construction after first upgrade water service in North Hampton Street to a 12-inch line and the eight-inch loop through Colonial Ave, or until a viable plan timeline for funding and installation. My only question here, Jeff, is whether we really want the fire department to be the one approving that or not. I mean, I realize this was largely based on a fire department concern, but I think there, it may not be the only concern about water service. But I don't know if we want it to be DPW and fire.
I would think so.
Right? Because they both have different needs.
I think DPW. I think DPW and Fire would be the two most important. I think what, inclusive in the fire department would likely be the building department. So, you know, there's an interaction between the fire department and the building code and requirements for water supply to the buildings. I did want to articulate that the, the main portion of the condition, the first two sentences, the first sentence is from, and a lot of this actually came from, some of this came from the applicant's memo. There was a memo in September about conditions. The latter, the last sentence is something that is proposed because the, currently the city is trying to pursue funding for construction of the entire stretch of water and sewer upgrades. So in the zoning document, which was intended to be like a zoning review, we are highlighting that the city has nearly complete 100% design plans for that. And if, this is intended to say that if the city secures funding and there's a timeline for installation, that there could be an opportunity that, you know, that works well and phase three is allowed to go forward with a building permit, knowing that this is.
We've already got funding for the whole project. It's going to happen this summer.
Right. But I wanted to make sure that it's contingent upon fire department and DPW, that if they're saying this will all work, there's an opportunity. If they're saying this is not going to be ready in time, then the applicant would be constrained by not going into phase three. It's just, it was a little heavy-handed to say that it must be completed in order they can, in order they can get a building permit for phase three. Because if it's in the works, if they're literally under construction in the roadway with the water service, the building could in theory start. And by the time the building's completed, the water improvement project is complete as well. So that was the intent behind that.
It kind of reads that the applicant is required to do that, we're upgrading though. I don't, that's how I read it first before hearing you.
Correct. I think the understanding is that if the city does not have funding.
The applicant has to.
The applicant will do that, but.
That last phrase is sort of an out in case we get state funding or approval or whatever, that we don't have to, they won't have to be the one responsible. And they also won't necessarily have to wait until that's done.
Correct.
If DPW and Fire agree. Yes, James?
I don't want to say, are you, okay. So I'm just curious if you saw this draft? I know it went out today that we're referring to right now. If the applicant has received that or seen it?
We did receive it and we didn't go over the fine details.
My second part of that is just, I personally request that as we're going through these, if any of these stand out as we're discussing them, that you don't understand what we're saying as a condition or that you feel you can't meet it, please let us know. Sorry.
No, that's fine. All right. And so then we have the affordable housing conditions, Jeff. So it looks like this is requiring 25% of the dwelling units in the Smart Growth Overlay District and 15% in the R15 shall be affordable, and they have to present that at a planning board meeting. My only question, I want to make sure we define affordable or at least reference the statute of regulation for what that is instead of just saying affordable. And is this in perpetuity or is this the 30-year plan or?
The term is not, the term to my knowledge has not been set. I think that's an open question for potentially the applicant to discuss. I think 30 years would be the expectation.
We have our affordable housing expert here in the room. Could you come on down, please?
Yep. Peter Graham, representing the applicant. Yeah, in the, in the zoning ordinance, it does reference 30-year as being the city's plan. So that I think would be worthwhile putting in that condition, just to kind of reference it. The reality is, is the intended funding sources go for 50 years or more, you know? But perpetuity is often something that people have used in the past. Now, everything is driven by the financial services industry as to what, how you structure your affordable housing. So 50-year terms, and then people are able to then kind of resyndicate and restructure them at the end of that period to, to kind of, you know, make sure they're kept up.
So 50 years is a reasonable term to put in for a condition on this?
I would, I would say 30 is the term that you want to stick with. Just, it's consistent with what the zoning ordinance is, but you know.
It would be a minimum of 30. And then the idea is that there are multiple criteria under 7.46, which is referenced here, that would be confirmed by the applicant and then reviewed and approved by DHCD and then provided to the.
And extended that way.
Right. And then that would be where the planning board would potentially learn if they were actually able or willing or came to an agreement to do 50 years instead of 30, but as long as it was a minimum of 30.
The, a big chunk of the funding that is proposed for this is a 50-year term, the Housing Stabilization Funds, which is a D or EO HLC, you know, program. So that is quite likely that that'll be part of it. The one question I had on 7.46 is, is the city planning to be the monitoring agent or do we need to identify one of the third parties if the city is not, you know, choosing to be, it says, you know, in any case where the monitoring agent cannot adequately carry out its administrative duties, that we need to determine a third-party monitoring agency? Now, granted, the plan would be that the state agency would be the monitoring. First case, best-case scenario, we get funding through the state, the state is the monitoring agent. Secondarily, the city would be the monitoring agent. And the third side is, is if the city chose, we don't want to be the monitoring agent, we would have to identify. But it's kind of predicated in the, in the permitting that this is laid out.
Okay, so is that an internal city building department question to see if that's something? I think we've done that in the past where we've been the monitoring agent, but I'm also not sure that we really do it.
We, the city will not want to be the monitoring agent. The city does not have the resources to do it. So I think we can say that kind of uniformly.
So hopefully it'll be the state. Otherwise, there'll have to be an independent third party.
It will be the state and then for whatever reason, the state.
Besides not to.
Besides not to do it or something happens, then.
Right.
Then you guys hire or we have to hire a third party.
Okay.
We can even condition it that no building permits for the residential are granted until a monitoring agent is determined.
Yeah, although I think this might be something that happens 10 years down the road. Yeah.
But it's still.
Right. I think Daniel's right. Is you can, the building permit, you, for the residential specifically, would be something you'd want to, at that time, determine the monitoring agent. And I think it will just happenstance be the state.
And then, I mean, do we need a condition that says in the event it's not the state that that's something that's done at the cost of the applicant?
It is, it's laid out in 7.4.
In the bylaw, yeah.
Yeah. And that, and my, my concern was just that if you, given that it is a future scenario of getting these applications and everything else, I didn't want to be in a position where, you know, we didn't have the monitoring agent known for a, for a permit granting.
Yep, that makes sense.
And because it's already referenced as 7.46, I think then we're good, right?
Yeah.
I think we are. There is one thing, and I know this is where we get into the weeds of it, but there is under 7.464, this is on, yeah, the page numbers are no good, 7.464, number four. There is a provision that says prior to the granting of any plan approval for the project, the applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the monitoring agent that the method by which the affordable rents and affordable purchase prices are computed shall be consistent with the federal and state guidelines of affordability applicable to City of East Hampton. I think that that is difficult to achieve at this stage.
Well, how would it not be if the state's going to be the one that ultimately approves whether it happens or not?
I think that's a question that we had.
That's precisely the part I was getting at, is like, if, if it's changed to prior to the granting of a building permit for the residential units, because at that point you would have the.
You would have monitoring agent and they've been convinced of this.
Exactly.
Okay. So is that technically a waiver we need to grant that they don't have to get it now?
It probably will be, yes.
Did you say prior to the granting of the building permit for the affordable units?
Yeah.
Is there a concept that there's a separate building permit?
No, no, I meant for the residential.
For the residential, okay.
Just in the sense that now we do, right, right.
And the way.
That makes it the thing, and which I think is righteous, and forgive me for cutting you off, is that it, you can't do any of the residential until the affordable's dealt with.
No, no, that's a different, it really just means that before a residential building permit is issued, the identification of a monitoring agent will have been, has to be made clear, and will have to show them to their satisfaction that our affordability, you know, setting of rents is, is a federal and state-approved way. Which really is, you know, this is, this is in the weeds, but it is, that was the area that I felt like a plan approval really has to come before that.
Right. That makes sense. I mean, I think that the concept is a waiver of that requirement here with the condition that it is approved prior to a building permit for the residential.
Correct. And then in terms of timing, the, the way the condition is structured is that prior to the issuance of a building permit for any residential unit, that the affordable housing restriction is also prepared and reviewed and approved by DHCD. So I just want to make sure that that's kind of, we're acknowledging that there will be affordable units in the plan approval, but then before there's a building permit for a residential unit, all the i's and o's will be dotted and t's will be crossed with approval by DHCD of all the, all the important documents that we don't have now, will have before there's a building permit issued. And that's how we've done it for.
Yep.
47 Cotter Street is the only other project that we have under this zoning district, and that's, that's the same methodology that we use for that.
Next up, under landscaping, we have prior to issuance of a building permit for the pad site or the mixed-use commercial units, a final landscape plan is submitted for review and approval by the board at a public meeting, prepared in Conformance of the Provision Table 7.5. I think that makes sense. And then prior to issuance of any building permit for residential buildings in the R15 zoning district, a final detailed landscape plan submitted for approval by the board.
Yep.
So we'll get those for each section before those happen. Building plans, prior to the issue of a building permit for said buildings in the SGZD, the applicant shall present architectural elevations of the following buildings to the planning board at a public meeting. So there's a restaurant building. Restaurant building requires that there's written notice to a butters in accordance with 48, section 11. And then the mixed-use commercial building, standalone retail building, contractors, units, and that's it. And then we do have our regular major, minor changes condition. Transportation-related, Jeff, what's that getting at?
So I apologize that I didn't get to transcribe it all into one place. There was a memo from the applicant's traffic engineer that talked about, there are a couple conditions that we would expect to see in terms of the monitoring program.
Right.
So there's a, there's a rather detailed outline of how the monitoring program would occur. And we, I can pull it up, but I can't.
No, we went through that.
Talk at the same time. That it happens on an annual basis, and that's reported to Mass DOT and provided to the city. And that will be really important to dictate the timeline for some of these improvements. I mean, it was initially discussed heavily with the signal, because the signal wasn't always warranted until the end. The roundabout, there could be a timing situation where it doesn't start as a roundabout, starts as a regular driveway intersection, but converts to a roundabout at some later date, and the, the demand management program would dictate that along with Mass DOT. There were some other conditions in there that.
Remember you had to hear about the bus stop? To the extent that it's feasible with Mass DOT, that they try to put a bus.
Correct, yes. And Valley Bike as well. Right. And we, the applicant has agreed to work with the city on a, on a potential Valley Bike, shared station or some other, whatever the future of the Valley Bike program is, but that would be one of the transportation demand management options that we'd like to have available from the project. And so if, if we're looking at another draft coming forward to the board, potentially the next meeting or something, then we can flush those out. But there is a memo, it's dated September 14th, in which those would be pulled from.
What I'm envisioning is a draft decision. I think there are still some, like, real tipping point questions about, like, some of the stuff we talked about, like, is this, you know, in the character of the neighborhood? Or have they minimized tree reduction? Things where I think, like, people can disagree and people are just going to have to vote their conscience on that. But my idea is to have a draft decision with all the findings we have to find. I think you do a good job, Jeff, in the technical memo of pulling out those things where it's like, this is the question for the planning board. And I, maybe we can flag those things in a draft decision too, where you can just hopefully cut and paste instead of having to start from scratch. But, I mean, I think some of this is just going to be, we now know this is, you know, the most condensed plan that the applicant can put forward. This is what we have. How do people feel to vote on specific issues? But some of it is, if it's going to happen, what are the nuts and bolts that we all need to agree on? So I think hopefully that's what we can do at the next meeting. But I would like to open it up to public comment.
One thing real quick, just normally something that we usually see, but I think because of Conservation Commission's involvement in this project, is a storm, like, similar to the transportation monitoring, we usually have the stormwater, the SWIP usually comes through us, or does at times. Conservation Commission require you guys to have a SWIP and maintain all your BMPs and have a whole plan. Okay, so then there's no need for us to double down on that.
No, yeah. So we traditionally have, where the CONCOM also has jurisdiction, we defer to them on the stormwater. Sometimes we have to do it ourselves.
That's why I'm just making very clear.
Yeah, I know, that's good to check that.
All right. So it is 7:45, but I do want to get some public comment here. And we'll try to limit it to three minutes a speaker, and hopefully talking about things that we're talking about here and not repeating ourselves too much to the extent we can. So I guess first, is there anyone in the room with a comment or a question? Come on down, please.
I'm Kathy Ahern from Gulf Street. And I originally started being involved with this because of the potential major alteration in our neighborhood with the development of this project. And I guess our fate lays with Mass DOT since that doesn't seem to be of interest to, to this committee. But I was also a commercial industrial real estate appraiser for a very long time. And I worked on much more complicated projects than this. So I just want to point out a couple of things to just wonder if people are remember, what my basic question is, is what is the City of East Hampton getting out of this? And, and you keep talking about it as an affordable housing project. There are 35 units. They'll probably, they're all going to be one-bedroom, as I understand? How big are they going to be?
One, one, two, and three?
Yep, some two, some three bedrooms.
So that's only 35 units. It's a cup, in this whole package, it may be 50,000 square feet out of 400,000, 500,000 square foot project. It's, it's not a lot. And it's, it's an awful lot to give up for what, what you're talking about giving up. And I just don't understand this in comparison to the Kestrel Land Project and why the mayor is so enthusiastic about it when they've done everything they possibly could to be concerned about environmental issues. And we're now talking about a project where even the three and a half or four acres of trees, I have a third of an acre, I have 15 trees. If you're talking about, let's just round it to four acres, we're probably talking about 2,000, you know, hundreds and hundreds of trees here. And mature trees, as, has been pointed out. And, and the other thing I would just like to point out is, is normally, and when you're talking about commercial development, you're concerned about employment rates and who's going to take these jobs. Mostly what's being produced here will be low, low-paying jobs. Okay? In childcare, child gymnasium, restaurants, maintenance. The unemployment rate in the City of East Hampton is 2.3%. In the general area, there's, the only city that squeaks out over 5% is Springfield with 5.3%. This is not new to the region. This is not a temporary situation, given that the most influx of people in this area tend to be, at this point, retired. And so 5% is full employment. For those of you who haven't studied economics, we're talking about a situation where everybody who's looking for a job has a job. And for those people looking, according to the, the government statistics recently, there is one, there are 1.5 jobs available for every person who's looking for a job. So we're talking about, these aren't necessarily the kinds of jobs that are needed in East Hampton. You're talking about very large apartments. We've touted the fact that at 47 Cotter Street, those apartments were all pre-leased. They were probably 1,000 square feet on average. We're talking over here with the market rate ones, they're probably closer to 2,000 square feet apiece. I don't have the numbers, I don't know whether we have floor plans for the buildings, but these are large apartments. This is not what people in East Hampton are looking for at this point. This is not what people in East Hampton are looking for at this point. These are low-paying jobs for which it's not clear whether there are any people to take these jobs. And it's been pointed out how wonderful it would be to have more childcare. The reason why there is not enough childcare is not because there aren't enough childcare facilities, it's because there are not enough childcare workers. And this is a problem that plagues childcare centers across the country. And Massachusetts is no different. And it's very interesting about the pollinator gardens, just point out that most pollinators are active at night. We see the bees, and that's all lovely, but the majority of the pollinators are night active creatures. And if you have lots of streetlights around, it's not gonna do them any good. A perfect example of it is the Pollinator Garden on Pulaski Park in downtown Northampton, where it is lit up like a Christmas tree at night. So, you know, we're trying hard.
All right, I'm gonna cut you off there, but thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, I see Keith Sernak has had his hand up for a while online.
So, if you bear with me for a moment, I'm gonna change your status momentarily. So now, if you are there, you are free to turn on your camera or unmute.
You hear me?
Can.
Yes.
You can. I just saw this roundabout plan for the first time, and I was wondering if you could put that back up, the plan that Carrie had shown earlier on. And what I'm concerned about is I am the largest residential and commercial abutter to that roundabout. And I want to see from that diagram if it goes through my property, my Fort Mountain View property. And so it's a clarification. So, yes, I would be to, right to the left of where that, the lot adjoining the roundabout. Is that, and I can't see if that line cuts through my lot or not from this map. Carrie, do you know that?
Jeff, can you zoom in on that, or?
What's that?
Trying to zoom in on the map.
So, the roundabout is entirely within the applicant's property or within the existing Mountain View right-of-way?
Okay.
So it does not extend out of the property. This right here is the existing Mountain View right-of-way?
Yep.
And then this is the property, this is the applicant's property. So the building is further approaching upon its property than the original Mountain View does.
Gotcha.
So even a portion of...
I couldn't hear Mr. Durinas's answer is...
So the answer is that Keith, no part of the rotary goes outside of, it's either on the applicant's property or within the right-of-way from Mountain View.
Okay, so that commercial piece that attaches to the applicant is not touched, where it says "future driveway"?
Correct.
Okay, that was just clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Loring has a hand up?
So, just bear with me for a moment. David, as of now, you should be able to unmute and turn on your camera if you wish.
Okay, thank you. I'll just be brief, but I did want to thank the planning board and all the consultants for the time that we spent getting together, I think was productive and allowed us to advance to a solution that we're all largely in agreement. I represent 102 North Hampton Street, and on their behalf, I do say we do support the current roundabout solution that's been proposed. I do have a few comments on that that we'd like to get on the record. The single lane roundabout option that was presented is really the preference that we'd like to see advanced further. It provides adequate traffic capacity for both, you know, the current and future traffic projections, and the modeling indicates that the level of service and queues are appropriate as well as providing adequate access for the abutting property owners, not only the applicant, but the others within the area. We would ask that the sidewalks that are shown be adjusted to reflect the single roundabout option, that is, draw them in closer, and I'll conclude as to why that is. We'd like to see the utilities within Mountain View shown on that plan as to the relocation. We would also like to see the notes as far as the existing curb cut in front of 100 North Hampton Street moved. Any adjustments to the curb cuts would probably be the responsibility and purview of MassDOT. And finally, the accesses for the abutting properties along Mountain View Street, which would include Fire Ants, 102 North Hampton Street, which is Lot 91, adjusted to reflect those new entrances. So in conclusion, though, we'd like to see a final drawing set that reflects the changes that have been talked about tonight and represent the applicant's final design intentions for this. I think this will not only aid the planning board in your final decision, but also approval references as to what we're finally looking at, but also inform MEPA, MassDOT, and interview state agencies and public as to the next permitting phases of the project, so that everyone understands what this project is going to look like and the intentions going forward with MassDOT. Thank you.
David, can I ask you a question just about the sidewalk stuff?
Sure.
So, if the Phase 2 sort of situation does become necessary, doesn't that then necessitate sort of tearing up all that sidewalk and doing it again instead of building it with enough space beforehand?
Yeah, but it's unlikely that the sidewalks are gonna be located in accordance with what MassDOT would like to do and see along that, because they've already asked for bike accommodations. So provide, you know, the minimum we want, let MassDOT, through their designer, you know, demonstrate what the final is going to look like.
Gotcha. Thank you, David. Anybody else in, sure.
Wesley Sernak, Strathrile Properties. Jeff, could I ask you to put the map of the, sorry, the design of the rotary with just the single roundabout? I just wanted to expand upon what David Loring was talking about.
One moment.
I will note while Jeff is doing that, the existing utilities are shown on the drawings that the applicant submitted. You can see the underground sewer and water and the overhead electric.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Just come around.
What we're asking for is for the sidewalks here to be brought in to the curve inside, because the one bit of taking is on our right there. And until the point when this rotary does get expanded, if it should get expanded, we'd like to still have access, we use that.
Understood, thank you. All right.
So, I'll try and marshal my thoughts from an hour ago. I'm perturbed that we're at the point of talking about draft decisions. I realize that you still can weigh in on the particular points. I just feel like I've been listening to talk about traffic and the rotary, the roundabout, excuse me, for months, and I have not heard substantive discussion of the points that we've been raising over and over again. I do have some particular comments related to the density waiver. I wasn't aware of the other waivers that were being requested. And just for the public, because I know that not everybody's gonna read the submissions that we've, the written submissions that we've provided. So I'll go through the, quickly through the points that the planning department and the applicant, that the applicant referred to. In promulgating the smart growth zoning, the city wanted to increase affordable housing. I don't think anybody questions that. The DHCD, when the 20-unit figure was raised, my understanding is that they were attempting to look at the parcels in East Hampton that were potential subjects of the new zoning and calculate the maximum number of units that could be created. It wasn't intended to be a constraint. It was trying to see what the potential was in East Hampton. In this project, as the council noted, there are two parcels, there are two different zones, there are two different sets of zoning bylaws that apply, and there are multiple applications. I would argue that provision of housing units with a lower affordable housing requirement in one district, R-15, does not displace the minimum unit requirement in the other portion of the property. A particular waiver would contravene the goals of the smart growth zoning district in providing and fostering affordable housing. And including the highway business portion in the smart growth zoning district, the planning board and the council wanted, I understand, to foster a certain amount of affordable housing units and a coherent and balanced mix of residential and commercial development. The mixed-use nature of this project doesn't mean that the developer's obligation to provide that mix of uses in those units in the smart growth zoning district disappears. And lastly, most importantly, per the smart growth zoning ordinance, a waiver must, quote, "be in the interest of design flexibility and overall project quality," unquote, and be consistent with, quote, "the overall purpose and objectives of the smart growth zoning district," unquote, and achieve its purposes. The requested density waiver does not meet those standards. And I'll go back to Chapter 40R and why that legislation exists. It's intended to promote affordable housing in a way that communities can provide input about the character and, sorry, that's a bad word, about the nature of the development and that it be a coherent mix of affordable and residential and commercial that meets the community's desires and needs. Where waivers are contemplated, my strong sense is that 40R is meant to prevent communities from restricting the amount of affordable housing. It's not meant to promote a developer's financial well-being. It's not meant to promote a situation where you're replicating in a highway business district development that is not smart growth, and then putting the housing off in, you know, segregated by itself, which is largely the case with this overall proposal. All of the waivers, the ones that I just learned about tonight, that are being requested are contrary to the spirit of smart growth. And I think, I think that bears some serious thought. One last, two last little quick points.
Quick.
Quick. There is a, one of, I think, two waterfalls in East Hampton that's just off the, just over the property boundary. And in terms of the supplemental narrative, that's not being considered. Historic features, there's been no survey of either industrial or Native American artifacts that I am quite convinced are on this site. So you can't argue that you're protecting features that you don't know about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room or online? I guess we don't have anyone else right now, you can come up.
Just one additional item that I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that there is a MassDOT representative online at the moment, Annie Audio, if you had questions that perhaps she could answer.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room or online? All right. Well, you've summoned Annie Audio.
Okay, Annie, if you hold for one moment here. As of now, you should be able to unmute and turn on your camera if you wish.
Oh, you're doing so well, Jeff.
She unmuted.
Okay.
Annie, we're able to potentially hear you if you say something.
Good evening.
All right.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to say a couple things. I'm here in a listening mode, and I will be listening for a long time, because although this roundabout option will be coming our way, there are going to be several opportunities thereafter for the public to be able to provide their feedback. I'm really happy that you're all engaged in coming up with a, an idea, a concept, a solution that you're looking forward to, but I just want to reach out and say that I'm here to listen, because I have a lot of East Hampton work going on right now, and I don't plan to be leaving at any time.
Thank you.
I don't think it was clear who she was.
It was on the screen.
Just said Annie Audio, or something like that.
I think the public is to presume that was the DOT person, but it wasn't clear.
Can we ask?
I didn't quite hear the last name, I think it's Miss Audio. Thank you. To state her title, if that's okay?
Yep, I am a project manager at MassDOT, and I am working on the Route 9, I mean, the Route 10 project, as well as the downtown East Hampton project.
She was written? Thank you. Any other comments in the room or online? All right, so, we need to continue, what was the date we were talking about, Jeff?
Due...
Well, first of all, we have also extended the, the applicant has agreed to extend the constructor approval.
Correct, the applicant has agreed to extend the timeline, which there's a copy for the chair to sign, that was agreeing to go to December 31st. And it has throughout had the caveat that if the board renders a decision earlier, you're not prohibited from doing that. There are some scheduling issues in the next couple of weeks, so, you know, the board's normal pattern would be to convene on November 7th, but that's an election day, and the board cannot hold a public hearing on that day, so the next regularly scheduled meeting would be November 14th.
Okay. And what's, how's that agenda?
So far, this would be the only item.
Okay, and, so just so we're clear about what we're talking about, we're gonna have, hopefully, a draft decision with both decision points for people to have their final moment of yea or nay, and also draft conditions to discuss.
Yes, and I, yeah, I think that that's totally understood, and I think that was the expectation, that was part of the reason. So for people looking at home, or who might be in the room, there is a document which is a preliminary review of the zoning ordinance as compared to the project, which will serve as the basis for the decision going forward, so it'll be changed in format. So that's fine, that's expected. There are a couple items that have not been discussed, but there are, you know, in terms of some of the relevant sections of the zoning have not been discussed yet, so those will have to be discussed at the next meeting. And then there's the series of findings that are required, and that was kind of this initial look at the zoning ordinances, was the facts provided so far? So, there are a lot, and there's a lot of documentation that has been provided, so that will be compacted into a decision. Summary of the meetings may not be in that at this point, but the findings will be. That's kind of how we've treated these draft decisions in the past.
I think that's good. I mean, I think there's a lot of findings, because there's multiple zoning ordinances that play, and a lot of them are easy check-the-box, and other ones are tougher searcher-soul decisions to make, and we'll get to them next month.
It's a month out, is, that seems like to me, but I know you don't have an assistant. Is that enough time for you to collate all this?
Yeah, I, you know, we had talked about going to October 31st, but two things, that's Halloween, and it's not enough time. But going to November 14th is fine, that would be expected, and I took the effort to go through this document over the past several days, so I'm in a, I professionally am in a good spot to draft that up for the board's consideration and have it available, ideally for the Thursday, Friday before the meeting.
I mean, the stuff you did for this meeting was really great. I mean, it made this much easier to do, and I think it's, you know, three-quarters of what you need for a decision, but it was greatly appreciated.
Is there anything we need from the applicant for you to do here?
Is there anything we need from the applicant for you to do here? Your next steps?
I have gotten a couple pieces of information from the applicant to clarify items. I think that what I did here was a potential few items on the roundabout plan. I think that that was a request that, I think, I guess the board's expectation would be you might get another roundabout plan. But otherwise, I think that we have enough information, you know, and that's, that's fine, I think we do.
Can you just ask that you clarify what those changes to the plan, where was it? What data or who was asking for it?
I mean, I don't know that we need the, I mean, I think the sidewalk question is just a question of whether we think the sidewalk should be placed there now or later. I think the utilities are already on that plan, it sounded like.
Yeah.
So I don't--
As are the, as are the entrances to all the buildings are shown, so it is a substantially complete plan.
David just raised his hand again, maybe we can clarify.
So David, as of now, hold on, actually, sorry, my apologies. As of now, you should be able to unmute and turn on your camera if you wish.
Just for clarification, the reason I mentioned the sidewalks is because they do impact right-of-way and looking for, there's going to be a lot of discussion on right-of-way resolution. We recognize that Mast dot ultimately will hold the right-of-way for both the roundabout and any modifications to North Hampton Street, but by showing those on a final revised plan, I think it not only will help the planning board, but I think it will also go a long way to advancing the discussion with MEPA and Mast dot. So pulling that sidewalk in, you know, as Leslie mentioned earlier, does eliminate one land taking that's currently shown.
Okay, thank you, David. Is that feasible? I mean, I don't think it reflects that we're going to do that, but at least we'll have the two plans to look at.
Yep.
All right.
Before I make this motion, can I ask a question?
Please do.
I have a memory, and maybe I'm wrong, there was a lot of reading, but that there was some information about a tax calculation and how much tax the, these would generate. I thought it was in this document, I just went through it three times, I didn't see it.
It is.
So I must be skipping the page, but I'm wondering if we could just read that little bit real quick?
Sure, and what you're referring to would be, the idea of this document is the zoning ordinance is on the page left, and then all the applicant's previous responses are compiled in one place. So there was sort of an initial submission by the applicant back in November of 2022, which had that information. It's required as part of a special permit finding. So if we look back on--
What does he just can't find it either? I couldn't find it.
It's labeled as--
I remember reading--
12-14.
Yeah.
Did you find it? Maybe we'll have, Jesse hasn't used his voice, he needs to practice it for next--
Wait, no, maybe I didn't.
No?
I thought it was in the--
Something like $400,000 or something like that annually, yeah.
Property taxes or--
Yeah, for the residential--
Well, maybe, maybe we'll get it for next meeting.
It's fine, I just, the only reason I brought that up is because, you know, there, a question was asked, you know, what's the value? And I just want to state, the value for me is pretty clear. And, you know, it's empirical, and I think it's valid to state that and read it out exactly, you know, what the tax revenue is, you know, what the benefits to the community are of a project like this.
Sure, so it's on 12-15 at the top, if you can find where that is, I mean--
Oh, yeah. So it says fair, and this is the applicant's letter, so fair market value of the project is estimated to be in the range of 26 to 30 million. Praise value of land is 932,000. We use 28 million as the value of the project as completed, reduced by the current value of 932. The increase in value is 27,68,000 at the current tax rate of 1653 per thousand. This results in increased annual tax revenue in the amount of $432,028. Also, under 40R, the city will receive a payment of $3,000 for each unit constructed in the 40R zoning district.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Tasty Top Development LLC till November--
14th.
14th. I will second that.
All right, we'll need to continue to the 14th, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstaining, all right. We'll see you next month.
Thank you for doing this, all right.
No problem. One more very important motion--
Oh, yes, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.